This letter is to inform you that when school resumes, we will break, can't we?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, 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 Ms. Peterson.
How you doing?
Fine. I get back, I couldn't put my, let me put that password, I hit the, then I hit the link and it just looked like it was forever trying to connect. So I called Michael Ponte and he sent me a reminder, he sent a reminder, so all I gotta do is hit the join, but that's not how he had it this last time. When I hit the link, it wouldn't let me get in. Christmas is almost here, huh?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Good evening ladies, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, you know what, I have, I can't seem to, can you see me?
No, I can't see, but the background is pretty.
Yeah, the background, but I don't know what happened to my picture. I tell you, it's a step by step process here, folks.
Yes. Hi, Howard.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, how are you?
Hello.
Okay, now I lost me altogether.
How are you, everybody?
Okay.
Doing well.
Very good, how's everybody?
Mr. Shaw, you doing okay? Mr. Shaw, you all right there? Oh, you're in, he's in, um, Never Neverland there, he's spinning. Mr. Shaw, you doing okay? Mr. Shaw, you all right there? Oh, you're in, uh, he's in, um, Never Neverland there, he's spinning.
Good evening, Mr. Long, how are you?
Let me see, that sounds like Mrs. Pitt's bouncing, or I just see the letters.
I don't know what happened to my picture.
John's spinning as well.
Hey, how are you?
Mine was a little bit delayed as well, there you go, Miss Pitt, that's a lovely background.
Yeah, but I don't know where I am.
I think you're in your house.
I know, I'm in my house, sorry.
He made that too easy.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw, he's still frozen, he's got a frozen screen. Mr. Shaw, you should hang up and try again, if you can hear me.
It seems like he can hear.
I don't see him.
Oh, no, he's stuck, he's stuck in motion there, unless he's staying very still.
Oh, there he is.
There he goes, look.
I see him now.
You're over there, Mr. Shaw, you're still spinning over here.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, I was there and then I was gone.
Yeah, I was there and then I was gone too, so.
Yeah, I just got myself back on.
Wow.
I don't know, Mr. Shaw, but seeing two of you during this meeting could be a little rough for me.
And I can hear everyone, right? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know what happened to my picture, I don't know.
All right. Sometimes you need a green screen for that.
A green screen?
Yes, then you don't fade into it, but you don't even see like you faded.
Right, I'm not even there.
No, are you in front of the computer?
Yes, I'm sitting right here in front of the computer.
You have your, uh, video on?
Yes, I have, it says stop video and then, no, it says start video. To start my video. Says start my video, but nothing.
I don't know.
I don't know what to say, because I've just learned how to set my background, so maybe I should.
Go out of your background, maybe and, uh.
You always click on and change your background.
Yeah, I just learned about that, I see up in the corner where I could do that, and this, and I did that. And, uh, the drop says switch audio, speak, okay, music mode, unmute, okay, camera, oh, maybe that's what it is. Okay, camera, okay, I hit the camera, okay. Change virtual background, I don't want to do that. I just want to find myself.
I needed that.
Mrs. Pitt is playing Marco Polo with herself.
It seems that way, doesn't it?
Not right, Mr. Shaw.
I don't know what. Okay.
Go out and try to come back in, Mrs. Pitt.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do, I'm gonna go out and try and come back in. Yeah, that's what I'm going to do, okay, folks, I'm leaving, bye.
I just missed, on the, on the chat, uh, it's Mr. Aponte, he says, click start video. Change background, change the virtual background.
Yeah, that's what she usually do, but she'll, she won't have that background if she changes.
Okay, here I am, can you see me now?
Yes.
Okay, I won't say, I won't say until next year what, why this happened. What the problem was, I know exactly what the prob, okay, 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 since you forced me to say what the problem was.
You didn't push something.
Well, I didn't flip off the flap that I have over my camera.
Alrighty.
And so I was there all the time.
Wow.
Because for instance, I'll show you what I mean, now watch this. See, I'm gone.
Yes.
And so now I'm back.
Too funny.
Excuse me, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Mitchell.
Mrs. Pitt, could you, Mr. Shaw to do that permanently?
Good evening, Ms. Mitchell, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Good, thank you.
Good, 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 you sound good, it's good to hear, it's good to hear you.
Thank you.
I have 5:54, is that correct? The time, I have 5:54?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Okey dokey.
Board meeting of December 22nd, 2020.
It's Mrs. Boyle, Miss, uh, Miss Boyle? Yes, yes, yes.
It's both of us.
Ah. Boyle going with video tonight.
Don't make me hurt you, Howard, let me do my hair. So I don't look so seasoned.
There's a school district employee talking to me, a member of Dr. Potteet's team, leadership team, saying, don't make me hurt you to the board's.
It may have been implied, Howard, but it was. I'm gonna. I'm gonna mute myself before I get in trouble.
Okay, who are we waiting for, waiting for, we waiting for, Mr. Blake? Ms. Thomas? Ms. McLendon? Oh, here she is. I see Ms. McLendon. So now it's Mr. Blake and Ms. Thomas, and Ms. Martin.
Ms. Dredon, we're muted.
Hello, Ms. McLendon, I'm sorry.
That was, I think that was Miss Boyle.
Yes, Miss Boyle was letting me know, I was muted. I had to mute myself to get my house in order before I start the meeting.
I know what that means.
Understood.
Hello, Ms. Kelly.
Hello.
How are you, Ms. Thomas?
Oh. Good evening.
I can see you very well now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It sounds like Ms. Martin, but I don't see her.
No, it was Ms. McLendon.
Oh, good evening, Ms. McLendon, how are you?
I'm wonderful, how are you?
Alrighty. Oh, there's Mr. Blake, he's putting up lights.
Yeah, I got my Christmas necklace I gotta put on. Ms. McLendon and Ms. Pitt are in the same exact location.
Oh, I'm at 5:58, now see, Mr. Blake, you're gonna make me go and get my Christmas beret.
I need a Christmas virtual background.
Have it.
Okay, if you can find it, good. Has Ms. Martin joined us yet?
No.
No, not yet? Hey.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Potteet.
Good evening, Dr. Potteet. Good evening, Dr. Potteet.
Good evening, Doc.
Good evening, good evening, now I just want all of you to know that you don't have to wrap my gift, you know, just drop it off. You know, don't, don't waste any wrapping paper, ribbons, bags stuffed with paper, you know, that's not necessary, just, just drop it off.
Okay, I see, I saw Ms. Martin. I did see her, block pop up, oh, there she is.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay. According to my clock, it's six o'clock.
Man.
Action. Oh, no, lights, camera, action. Good evening, good evening, good evening to everyone. Board members, community members, administrators. Welcome to the Windsor Township Board of Education, this is our regular board meeting and happens also to be the last meeting of 2020. Today is Wednesday, December 22nd, 2020. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates. It notices dated August 31st, 2020, December 2nd, 2020. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, the Butdubel Center, Edgewood Acres, Elm Town, and the Windsor Township post offices. And this is our mission statement. The mission of the Windsor Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in the climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assist them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Present.
Ms. Dredon?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Ms. McLendon?
Present.
Ms. Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. Shaw? Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
And Ms. Pitt?
Present.
We have a quorum, but before we begin, it's Tuesday, I'd like to make a correction, it's Tuesday, December 22nd.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Boyle, you're absolutely right, it is Tuesday, December 22nd. Can we at this point pause and recite the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, I'd like to just repeat and share with everyone our 2020-2021 district goals. Student achievement. We plan to continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students utilizing all available and appropriate instructional modes. This shall include, A, ensuring articulation at all grade levels throughout the district, B, focusing on classroom instruction at all grade levels, C, ensuring all students have equal access to equipment and resources needed to facilitate and promote student learning in any setting, especially now. D, evaluation and updating all district programs, and E, accountability of all district staff. Second, achievement goal. Continue to foster a positive school environment that is conducive to teaching and learning by, A, focusing on building relationships among all staff that will result in increased learning and more effective instruction. And B, promoting creative instruction that is training and retraining. C, emphasizing collaboration with all stakeholders. D, promoting cultural competence throughout our district. E, teacher-to-teacher relationships. And F, student-to-student relationships. That's how we plan to foster positive school environment. Number three, our third goal. Market our strengths and achievements to all stakeholders to increase capacity for greater parent caregiver community support by, A, continuing with our public relations marketing plan, B, continuing to work with the various advisory committees in the district, and C, by examining communication methods utilized by the district. Moving on, at this time, Dr. Potteet, would there be any awards or presentations?
Madam President, there are no presentations this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Potteet, correspondence, Ms. Boyle, would there be any correspondence this evening?
No, Madam President, none this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle, moving now, board members, I am asking for a motion to approve the minutes of our Board of Education, our regular meeting which was held December 9th, 2020, open session.
Peterson, move, motion.
Move by, move by Ms. Peterson? Is there a second?
Second by Dredon.
Second by Ms. Dredon, any further comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, moving now to our board committee reports, would there be a board committee report out of our operations committee?
Yes, Madam President. Operation Committee meeting, Monday, December 21st, 2020. Virtual WebEx, the operation committee met on Monday, December 21st, 2020, at 5:30 PM using WebEx, and attendance were, Dredon Committee Chair, myself, Mr. Shaw, and Ms. Mitchell. Also in attendance were Ms. Boyle and Ms. Chico. Were discussed, one district project, a high school addition. The elevator has been installed, we are very close to project closeout. Just need to install the phone and a card reader. B, 2020 summer fall project. One, the unit vents in the D wing of the high school have been replaced. Two, the PA replacement project at all schools are still on schedule to be completed during the first week of January. Three, demo of the modular unit at the middle school and the expansion of the parking lot have been completed. Four, renovation at the administration building and the curriculum office are at the punch lift stage. The greenhouse is still under construction with a completion date in April 2021. Six, the foul ball protection netting at the baseball field at the high school has been completed. Seven, the project lot, project at school two, three, and six have also been completed. Two, recommissioning and certification of HVAC systems. CM3 building solutions continue to perform by recommissioning and certification of the HVAC system district-wide. Conditions that exist continue to be addressed. There is a delay on getting blower motors for units vents and rooms throughout the district. This had a just estimate completion date to January 2021. Three, 2021 to 2022 budget. The 2021 to 2022 development process has begun. Building principals and departments heads have been provided budget figures. Budgets are at the end, budgets are to be entered by January 7th, 2021. The budget will be developed on flat funding, no increase or decreases in state aid. For free lunch and reduced lunch applications. We urge our free and reduced families to update the application or file since the year-end status is carried to begin, to the beginning of the next year. Five, 2019 to 2020 audit. The due date for 2019 to 2020 audit has been extended to February 5th, 2021. The order has finished most of the field work. The assumed deadline also extended to January 4th. It is our goal to have this completed prior to the due date. Alisa Law, school security grant. The application was submitted by December 21st, 2020 deadline. The application of $259,306 is to be used to pay for the rapid emergency response system. The coronavirus relief fund grant. The report of the expenditures and competence of December 18th, 2020 has been submitted. It shows that the funds have been committed prior to December 31st, 2020 deadline. Also, CARES Act. The district received an increased applications of $70,445. A motion approving the acceptance of these funds is on the addendum. And approved, to amend it, to amend, the grant will be coming in the near future. New items, uniforms update. To date, the district have received two, only two, applications for uniform assisting covering six students. The two applications are still pending because all requirement documents have not been provided. So the meeting adjourned at 6:00 AM and the next scheduled meeting is to be determined. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Dredon, board members, would there be any comments or questions for Ms. Dredon as it relates to the operations committee report? Thank you, moving now, would there be a report out of our education committee?
Yes, Madam President. A copy of the report was sent to each board member and our administrative team today around 5 o'clock, I apologize for the lateness. But it's inclusive of our technology update. Forty-one technology issues were addressed and resolved. It spells out the number at each school, the issue, and the comments. So I will briefly give you, school one, four requests. Noteworthy, a Spanish-speaking parent needed assistance with how to mute and unmute her computer. Assistance was provided by a bilingual technician. School two, two requests, unable to get into Google, needed to restart home router. Camera blurry on the second case. Chromebook was damaged by student. Three, school three, five requests, connectivity issues and Chromebook not working. Student damaged Chromebook. School four, four requests, trouble connecting hotspot. Chromebook would not hold a charge. Can't connect to the hotspot, student damaged Chromebook. The replacement of the charger eliminated one that could not hold a charge. School five, one request, assisted with connecting hotspot. Six, school six, two requests, keys on Chromebook not working. Replace Chromebook and unable to login. New student needed account established. Middle school, seventeen requests, microphone not working, Chromebook not charging, Google not working during outage, NASA electrical outage. All those were resolved. High school, four requests, connectivity issues. People not working during outage and home router needing to be rebooted. We have forty-one requests since we've been tracking the data and all issues have been addressed.
and all issues have been addressed and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Would there be any questions or comments as it relates to the report out of the education committee? Thank you. Moving now, negotiations. Mr. Long, is there anything that can be said? Any comments can be made about negotiations? Ms. Long? Okay, we're having a little difficulty here. Can't hear you.
Here we go.
Okay.
Um Mrs. Pitts, we should have a a report in executive session shortly after the first year and and get get it all wrapped up.
Okay.
I think we're pretty much there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Long. Would there be a report out of our marketing and then our athletic committee, Mr. Shaw?
No, no reports um out of either committee. I just want to thank everybody uh from the marketing committee and the athletic committee for all the work they uh did this year, especially for the virtual town hall last week. Um on the marketing committee side, um I know we took a lot of questions and Dr. Potte, thank you very much for answering all them. So again, thank you and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. The same to you. I mean, thank you very much, Mr. Shaw. Moving now, board members to our policy committee. The policy committee uh met on Monday, December twenty first, twenty twenty at four P M. The meeting was held virtually in Webex. Those in attendance, uh Dr. Carcamo, Sister Superintendent, uh Ms. Lorraine Dredin, board member, Ms. Rita Martin, board member, Ms. Sabina McLendon, board member and myself, Cheryl Pitts, Board President. The committee met for the express purpose of responding to and in consideration of a request received during our first virtual town hall board meeting held on Wednesday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty. The request was for the board to consider suspending the dress code policy due to financial pre and post purchasing problems experienced by some of our parents in the community. With the exception of one committee member, the committee's recommendation to the board is that we not suspend the dress code policy. However, we can take steps to address the above mentioned problems through offering flexibility in the amount that parents can be reimbursed and also if necessary change the household income limits for those requesting assistance. The committee discussion ended at approximately four forty seven P M. A date for the next policy committee meeting will be determined after the board's reorganization meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, January sixth, twenty twenty one. Would there be any questions, comments with regards to the policy committee meeting?
Mrs. Pitts?
Yes, Mr. Shaw.
So based upon what some of the co uh questions and comments at the town hall were for the uh the relief for the uniforms. Um what is the policy committee looking at doing to alleviate some of the issues? Cause with parents, some parents out of work, some parents having financial hardships with hours cut back and various other issues, what are we looking at doing to help out?
Well, Mr. Shaw, I'm going to repeat, I'm going to repeat my report. The committee this, um however, we can take steps to address these financial problems through offering flexibility and the amount that parents can be reimbursed first and also if necessary, change the household income limits for those requesting assistance.
Well, the reason I ask, uh huh, reason I ask is because reorganization is, I believe, January sixth. Board meeting in the new year will be January thirteenth. We go back to school for hybrid on February first. That leaves us eighteen days from, you know, pretty much or twenty five days, eighteen days after our first board meeting. Um so I don't know when, you know, your next policy meeting will be, but that leaves parents a very little time to scrounge up uniforms, especially if they need to buy new ones. So I'm just kind of looking at the the crunch time for parents.
Well, actually, um, Mrs. Shaw, let let me say this. This, what is covering all of this, I heard you say we go back in hybrid, we don't know that. We actually at this point do not know what particular mode we will be returning in in January. As has indicated by Dr. Potte prior previously, it really all depends on what the public health officials are saying with regards to where our numbers are with the COVID infections in our county and in our township. And remember, what we have all heard over this past weekend is that there is a new strain that has now descended upon us. And so we have to be, um we have to realize that it very well may be um that we may not be able to return. But in the event, Mr. Shaw, you raised a good question. In the event that we do have to return, remember your timeline is correct. We do return with the reorganization meeting on January sixth. The reorganization meeting does not say that we cannot discuss or make decisions at that time. So just, uh I would like the board members to think about that. But with regards to, again, the recommendations out of of the policy committee to the board is that certainly we can assist financially uh and also assist income wise. That is a recommendation from the policy committee to the board.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Peterson.
And I think that's a good recommendation that we um can extend because hearing um the operations committee, they only had two um applications so far. And I know that um Dr. Potte has had um perhaps six real talk with the superintendent, and I think that started November the sixteenth. And I'm not certain he can share with us if there has been any mention of um financial hardship in terms of uh uniforms because technically they were supposed to be returning January the fourth. Has there been any hardships uh expressed during the?
Uh Mrs. Peterson, you you are right in terms of the number of real talk with the superintendent. We started November the sixteenth. We have had uh six meetings, including yesterday. We've never had anyone raise a question about uh uniforms or a need for assistance. However, um we have um made it very clear over the course of the years uh that we have that financial assistance available. And if any parent or family feel that their financial situation has changed uh then they need to let us know. But here's one thing I want to let the board and community know, and that is uh we've had this financial assistance in place for a number of years. And for whatever reasons, the community has not used uh that assistance. Uh for the past couple of years here recently, um five hundred dollars for the entire township. Now, I know there may be some hardships out there now because of the pandemic. I would encourage those parents, if you are in that situation and you need assistance, to take advantage of it. But at this point, the community even prior to the pandemic have never used that financial assistance for uniforms. So it's still there, it's available, and I encourage any parents out there who need assistance uh to please reach out to the business office uh so that we may assist you. After Potte.
One more comment. Um that's been in existence, the financial uh since two thousand and twelve for eight years. And I did some review of um the board records. And totally, we all spent thirteen thousand, eight hundred of the hundred thousand that we estimated when we developed the policy in two thousand and twelve. So I I just want to bring it to your attention because I would strongly encourage parents to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. I think Mr. Blake had some comments.
Yeah, I just had a comment about the assistance part. Um as far as the limit, like, is there a limit for people in the community to apply for this assistance? Are we looking at it to cap it? Like, you know, is it twenty families? Is it a hundred families? I'm just curious to know.
We we have uh never experienced um a limit whereby we had to turn people away. As a matter of fact, Mr. Blake, uh the use of that resource is so underused. Um, we just never had a situation. I think one year, maybe couple of years ago, three years ago, we probably spent the most we've ever spent, maybe about five, six thousand dollars that particular year. Uh but we've never been in a situation where we had to turn people away because people, for whatever reasons, families just haven't used the resource. So it's still there and it's just a matter of letting us know um if you need that assistance so that we can help.
I I'm just afraid because twenty twenty has just been a unique year. And, you know, there are a lot of families that are currently not working, and I would just hate for the business office to be bombarded with um requests when we actually could probably relax the rules just for this year, especially if we go back. And then in September, we can kind of go back to business as usual. I just feel like we really need to reconsider um this recommendation about the uniforms. Just at least until we come back in September. That is just my recommendation. Um but like, if parents need to go and, you know, visit the business office to request funds, by all means, do it though. And, you know, you know, for me, I never even thought about uniforms to be true. You know, truth be told, like, like uniforms really wasn't a thought, you know. So I think now that people are talking about it, like, you know, I think, you know, people will, you know, possibly take advantage of, you know, the request.
Well, we sincerely, Mr. Blake, hope they do.
Question for you with the, um we we're talking about the assistance program. Now, I know Ms. Dredin read her report. She said there were two requests, but it's on hold because they're waiting for certain paperwork. Like, what is the process? What's the turnaround? How quick is it? What do people have to do to get the assistance? Is something we're just granting or you got to surrender a bunch of paperwork?
Um Ms. McLendon, I can address that. There are documents that they, yeah, they just have to meet the income requirements and then bring the receipt. And the two that are pending are pending because um the receipts were not brought in.
Okay.
And that's it. And and it's in, as far as a huge influx, I have a um a woman in the office that that's one of her duties is to process these applications. So I want to encourage families out there that if they are in need of uniform assistance, we're here.
Okay.
Okay.
Like, I'm in, um, you know, in agreement with Mr. Blake regarding this. Um one of the things that I was concerned about is that there are no school clothes out at this time. You know, and if you're looking to buy them online, you have to look for them and search for them, but it's not even guaranteed that the clothing that you purchase will even fit your kids because our children have been home since March. Um so there's a lot of what ifs. One of the big what ifs is what if we don't even go back in February? And my concern is that, you know, now that we're going to recommend that uniforms not be um that we don't be more flexible with the uniform uh at this time, meaning then parents will have to go out, try to, you know, come up with the money or wait for it, you know, if they qualify based off of their income, whatever the case may be, to go out and purchase uniforms and then February comes in, we don't open, and now we're going into September, and now money that was spent that really families may not have, but their kids used to go to school and they need to be you know, under the policy that we're re reiterating here. I just felt though if we relaxed it um and set the guidelines as to what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, that we would do some justice to some of these families who are already struggling with everything else on their plate. They shouldn't have to also deal with, you know, the school situation and making sure their kids have uniforms um during this time when we're in a pandemic. So, you know, that was one of my reasons for recommending that we do look at the relaxed dress code.
One more comment I I wanted to make. I had promised um two families in my neighborhood that were interested in purchasing clothes after uh last week. And I shared with them because I said if they needed help, I would just buy the clothes because I know that our H S A did a great job having the um uniform exchange. Kudos to them for last, the past couple of years. But Walmart, when I went to Walmart, they have a sale. It's only on the long sleeve shirts, but they have a sale on now. So I just told my neighbor, please let me know what size that you need or if I need to give you the money and you go get it. Right? I agree that the need might be there, but I think we need to analyze how we move forward. I'm willing to actually purchase some more if if there's abundance of people in uh Winslow that need uniforms. I'm willing to donate to the uh uniform allotment.
Well, Ms. Peterson, can I just say this? Like, I know, like, people may feel funny about people donating stuff. And I feel like we could just kind of alleviate that by just relaxing the uniform policy just for at least till September, at least until we kind of see what's going on. Cause I wouldn't want you to spend, I know you volunteered, but I didn't. I wouldn't feel comfortable you spending your money to get uniforms. Like, I think that's a great idea, but like, you might be buying a lot of uniforms from a lot of our families, and I don't think that you should be doing that. I just feel like we just need to kind of reconsider relaxing the uniform policy. And I'm agreeing with Ms. McLendon here on this one.
Okay, here's what one, uh here's what I would say to Mr. Blake, Mr. Shaw, and Ms. McLendon. I think you would all agree that our students this year have gone through a tremendous upheaval. It's been unprecedented and it's been unplanned. And one of the things that certainly, as an educational institution, that we want to do is to maintain stability and consistency for our students, especially at this time. And so therefore, for us to speak in terms of relaxing or suspending a policy can create problems. If you're talking about relaxing or suspending, and I hear the word relaxing, I hear the word flexibility, then you're then talking about creating a whole new set of guidelines. And board members, our students, our students need to be able to realize and consider that we are still in school. As Dr. Potte has reported earlier several times, we even, of course, have students who, since we're all remote, they have, they, in a sense, in a sense, my words have been missing in action. And so we've had to send Mr. Mills out to find out where they were. So if we're going to maintain a proper mindset of school environment, we are still in school, ladies and gentlemen. And we still have the responsibility of establishing a curriculum. Now, I do understand what uh you are saying, but I want you to also remember that there's a huge what if, a huge what if that we're having to deal with.
And could I say something, Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, yes. Also, when Mr. Shaw was saying about um, you know, people cannot afford to uh go out and maybe buy uniforms or whatever. Okay, but if we took away that, you got to remember the parents are going to, the children are going to want new things. They're going to go out and buy them new clothes. So they are going to still purchase for their children to go to school. A lot of them are still going to purchase things because the children are going to want new clothing to go back to school.
But Ms. Dredin, I I I don't want to cut you off though, but I feel like um if they already, it's optional. I'm not saying that they have to buy new uniforms or new clothes, but let it at least be an option. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that they got to go out and buy new uniforms or new school clothes, but at least let it be an option. So I hear what you're saying, but it make it an option.
But I'm trying to say either way, either way, still going to be, they have to go out and they're going to purchase something.
Right. Can I interject at this point? It's Ms. Mitchell, yes.
Okay.
Having a very lengthy discussion about a whole lot of what ifs. Let's think about the facts that we have here. The fact is that there are funds available and parents have not applied to use those funds. We are in a very difficult time, a very um where people are losing their jobs, don't have money, and they're not using the resource that's already there. So why are we discussing something about parents who may need, when we're there to supply the need, if they actually just take the time to apply for it? So I think we're going around in circles here saying, can we do this? Can we do that? When we haven't heard from the parents, we are constantly doing things. We're constantly talking about, there are parents out there that need this, there are parents out there that want that. And then when the, that actually speaks for itself, it shows that there are not that many parents that need what we're doing all this discussing about.
That's right.
I think we need to consider that if there is a need and we run out of money because we have given all the money out to parents, wonderful, it's there for them. But we're still talking about what if and giving them options that parents themselves have not stepped up and said they actually need it or have applied for.
Well, I think that it did, the reason why we're discussing it, Ms. Mitchell, is because it came up at the last meeting, the town hall. I'm not sure if you were present, but that's where the discussion is coming from because there were questions in the chat that was talked about if we could relax the dress code because there are a lot of parents that are dealing with financial crisis right now and struggles. That's the reason why the policy committee went back to discuss it because it was coming from community members and parents.
So again, we still have, since, since that meeting and before that meeting, there were still only two applications too. So I'm saying that if the need is there, the parents have the option of applying for that financial assistance.
Okay, so board members at this time, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to ask for a motion to be put forth with regards to the recommendation that has come from the policy committee. That's why we met. I need to know who, which, whether or not we're going to accept the recommendation or whether we want to go to the, uh, to the, take the other option of relaxing or suspending. So could someone put, train that in, in the motion for me, please?
I move that we support the recommendation of the policy committee in reference to, uh, not relaxing the policy, but making certain that their financial support is in place for those parents that are in need of, uh, clothing.
I second.
Is there a second?
Dredin's second.
This movement second, any further, any further, um, discussion before I call for the vote, roll call?
Mrs. Pitts, Madam President, may I say something?
Yeah, so, oh, Ms. Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, here, here's what I'm going to ask board members because we're on this virtual. When you're going to speak, identify yourself first. Okay, okay, Ms. Thomas, there you go.
I just wanted to say, um, of course I have children in the, in the district. Um, we have one now, but there was a time when I had three and I did apply for the uniform assistance, probably two years in a row for three students. Uh, the application process is not difficult. It's, I think you have to apply W two and the receipt for the uniform. Walmart does have uniforms online for parents to purchase. And, and I'm only saying this because working with kids and working with young people, they need normalcy. They need to, if, if they're going to return, they need some sense of normalcy. And I think it'll be very difficult to, in September, change it back again. It's, it's already difficult getting them to, you know, do the virtual learning and change that. So I think as, as much as we can keep the same for the students, I think we should keep the same. And I understand the financial difficulties. Um, I'll be transparent and say that I'm experiencing that also. But if I had to send my son back to school, I would want it to be as normal as possible, especially with all the dis- social distancing, the mask, everything that's out of the ordinary for them. I think we should keep this the same for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Before, again, I'm about to, we've had the first, we've had a motion and it's been second. I'm ready to ask for a roll call. Ms. Boyle, roll call, please. We're asking to, to accept the recommendation of the, uh, policy committee.
Okay, Mr. Blake?
No.
Ms. Dredin?
We didn't hear you, Ms. Dredin.
All right, I'm, yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
No.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw?
You're on mute, Mr. Shaw.
No.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
So therefore we accept the recommendation from the policy committee. At this time, we're moving on to, uh, our last policy report, our, our last, I'm sorry, committee report. That is from the Citizen Advisory Committee, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Martin.
Good evening, Madam President, good evening, board members. Um, the flyer for the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee is currently on the, uh, district's website. And it also is on the district's Facebook page. Um, they have all the information that they need there and it will be up until January 5th. And it will consist of 12 members when we are finished setting it up.
Um, Ms. Martin, a question with regards to the cutoff date for that January, you said 5th. I, I would only add that since we're, we've agreed as a board to move the opening of the, of, of our reopening or restarting for our second, um, session, would we, is it possible that we could move that back also?
Move it back to?
Give it another week or so for people to turn in that application?
So you want me to go into the following week, which would be, I think the 12th or 13th. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Okay, we want to, okay, now, let me say this, I'm hearing feedback. Someone, uh, is coming through with some feedback. Okay, thank you. So, uh, Ms. Martin, is it possible, and also asking board members, that we could push back that January, the fourth date? If we could push it back to January, um, 11th? I need to hear from board members.
So are we, are we talking about the due date? What are we talking about?
We're talking about, we're, we're talking about the cutoff date to submit the application.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, but I do have a question, Ms. Martin.
Hold, 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 hold the, now, Mr. Shaw, you're fine with what, which date?
The ele- the 11th.
You're fine with the January 11th date?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. McLendon?
I'm, I'm fine with the date. I have a question though.
Ms. McLendon, which, which date?
I'm fine with the 11th.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, Ms. Martin, so are we still looking to do what we were talking about with the, um, Zoom meet, meeting with people that may be interested in the CAC? Because I thought that we were kind of going a different direction.
Okay, so what has happened is because I couldn't figure out a way to have them come in, they can fill out the flyer, we can have the meeting, they, and from there, we can move forward. It's just in a different form because of, originally, it was that there was going to be an announcement made that we were going to have the Zoom and they needed to get on the Zoom. And then after that, the flyer would be available. Instead, I made the flyer available now and then there will be a meeting, a meet, and then we'll move from there. It's just reversed, that's all.
Okay, so we're going to get the applicants that are interested first and then do a meeting?
Yes.
Afterwards, okay.
Yes, because I just, I, I wanted to do it so that it would, it would run smoothly and I couldn't get, figure out a way to do that without possibly excluding or missing somebody. And I was trying not to do that.
Okay, okay. I just thought that we were going to, um, do the meet first, the way that we can address questions, um, talk about the expectations of what the, we were looking for, for CAC members. And then from that case, people would decide whether or not, if it would be a good fit for them. That's how I thought that we were going to go. But if we're going to go that direction, then we'll get those who are already interested. And then, you know, open, are we going to open it up to those who may not have put in at the time? Because they may have questions or, you know, want to know more about it before deciding whether to put it in? And how are we going to work that?
I would prefer that they, they fill out the flyer. If after the meeting, they decide that they do not want to be a part, all they have to do is just let us know.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so, um, Ms. Pitts, uh, we're going to move that date to January 11th.
Yes.
So I will have to get in touch with, uh, Mrs. McCreary to change the date that is already on the application.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martin.
You're welcome.
Board members, at this time, I'm still on page two. I am asking for a motion to approve the superintendent's report that begins on page two and continues through to the top of page five. Is there a motion?
Peterson, move.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredin. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now, board members, I am asking for a motion to approve the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report that begins at the middle of page five and then continues through to the bottom of page nine. Is there a motion?
Peterson, move.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredin. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes, do I need to recuse myself for item number 10, even though it's no cost to the board, any evidence?
Not necessarily, because there is no cost.
No, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now, I'm at the top of page 10. I'm asking for a motion to approve the personnel report that begins at the top of page 10 and continues through to the bottom of page 11. Is there a motion?
Peterson, move. Thirty seconds.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredin. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, board members. I draw your attention now to our addendum. I believe we all received that addendum via our email today. Is there anyone who did not receive the addendum? Okay, so therefore on the addendum, I'm asking for a motion to approve the Administrator Board Secretary's report that begins on page one, continues through to the bottom of page three. Is there a motion?
Peterson, move.
Dredin's second.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredin. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now, board members, I'm asking, we're still on the addendum for a motion to approve the personnel report as it begins and ends on page four. Is there a motion?
Dredin's second.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredin. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. We're returning now, board members, to our regular addendum on page 12. Here at the point, uh, Ms. Boyle, would there be any open public records act reports requests?
None for this period, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Board members, would there be any old business that you would care to discuss at this time?
Yes, I have something, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Blake.
I just wanted to, um, ask Dr. Poty, um, and I don't know if you have it available, Dr. Poty, tonight, but I wanted to just see if we had an update on, uh, any more leeway we've made with the numbers um, of still students missing attendance from remote. I mean, I know you gave us a report last time with the individual schools, but I know we still have some outstanding students. So I didn't know if we had an update on that.
I do not have an update tonight. However, I do know that Mr. Mills, uh, on a regular basis, two, three days a week, still making those house calls, letters are still being sent. Um, but what I will do from this point on, uh, just have those updates available in the event, um, you know, that information is needed, but I am not prepared to respond tonight.
Very well, thank you.
Any other, um, questions on old business, board members?
Um, Dr. Poty, I, I'm not sure, uh, this tech really is kind of old business. This goes back to transportation for athletes. Um, when we go into, uh, um, the winter sports season, um, and we go, also start the hybrid. Um, if we, if we do get, go start in the hybrid, how will the transportation work?
Well, at, at this point, um, we will, uh, make every attempt to provide transportation, particularly for those young people who may be at home, uh, during the days in which practice is going to occur. Uh, we're not sure how many students we have. Uh, so we are in a position to start the planning process, but we cannot move any further because at this point, we have no idea how many students are going to be participating. Uh, Mr. Gaskell and I, along with the athletic director, have had conversations about transportation. So, uh, we're going to do whatever we have to do to meet that need. But at this point, it's just like everything else we're doing. And until we know what those numbers are, how many students we're talking about, uh, then we'll automate those adjustments accordingly.
Any other questions, any other comments on old business? Thank you, board. Moving now, new business, board members. Would there be any new business that you would care to discuss at this time? Thank you, board members, hearing us. Did someone say something? No? Okay, moving now to informational items. Dr. Poty, would there be any informational items you would?
Yes, um, uh, Madam President, I have just a few information items, uh, for this evening. As I normally, uh, tried to keep the community abreast of, of the update of the positive cases here in Winslow Township and in Camden County. As of today, um, we had 275 new cases in Camden County, which brings our total now to 26,461. In Winslow Township, we had 19 positive cases today, which brings our total to 1,860 positive cases. Uh, over the weekend, we didn't have any deaths fortunately, uh, today, but over the weekend, unfortunately, we had 11 deaths in Camden County, which brings our total to 703, uh, individuals who have passed. Uh, our positivity rate is hovering at 14%. Our positivity rate is hovering at 14%, lower than previously, but is still in the high category for Camden County. An update for all of those families out there who are participating in our free breakfast and lunch program. Today was our last day for pickup and delivery. I know at the high school and at School Three, today we gave, excuse me, we distributed over 500 breakfasts and lunches. And we are providing the evening distribution at School Three as we speak between four and seven. The difference with the distribution today, ladies and gentlemen, every family will receive 14 days of meals. That will hopefully hold those families over until we return on January the 4th, and the next pickup and delivery will be January the 5th. So we are going to continue to provide those meals to those families. And we did ask, as I mentioned earlier this year, for the extension to have food service available throughout the entire school year, and that approval has been given. Last night, I was asked a question by one of my parents who normally come on the Real Talk with the Superintendent, and the question was asked of me about teacher aides, particularly in the classrooms where we have our special education students. I said to my parents last night that whenever I give them a response that require further investigation, I'm going to do so, and I reserve the right to make sure that I give them accurate information. But the question was posed to me about the number of aides being available, if it is in either the child's IEP, or whether or not the classroom require an aide. Will those aides be available when we return to school, hopefully in February? I said that that is the case, that is our anticipation. So this morning, I met with Mr. Davis and asked Mr. Davis to contact the service provider for the aides to find out where we are, if we are going to open in February, how many aides will we have available to us? We normally hover around 185 aides throughout the district. Mr. Davis informed me that right now, we have 49 vacancies. The company has not been able to fill those vacancies. And again, dealing with the pandemic, we have individuals who are no longer interested, people who do not want to return for various reasons. So therefore, we may be dealing with a shortage, which means, based on the question asked of me, will we be able to provide an aide in every classroom or individual in which an aide is required? My response at this time is, we're gonna do whatever we can, but based on these numbers, we are definitely looking at a shortage, which means that there's a possibility that some classrooms or individuals may not receive an aide. We are going to continue to work with the agency to see if we can get those numbers where they need to be, but at this point, we're looking at 49 individuals short, and the possibility of us not being able to meet all of our needs is definitely a reality. One additional question that was asked of me, and that is, how are we going to communicate to the entire community our status as we prepare for the holidays and making sure that all the parents know where we are and what we're going to be doing? I will be doing a robo-call to all the parents. That robo-call will start entering the homes tomorrow at 6 o'clock, letting them know that the Winslow Township School District has extended its reopening date to February 1st. So right after the winter break, which is January 4th, the Winslow Township School District will be in full remote. I will be sending a letter, emailing the letter to that effect to all parents tomorrow. The letter will also appear on our website to make sure that all the parents are aware of where we are, what our status is, and that too will enable any parents who may need a letter for whatever reasons, to let maybe their place of employment know where the school district is and why they may have to make some adjustments. So that letter will appear tomorrow on our website. We will email that letter. And between now, over the break, and the beginning of our school year, which is January 4th, will be full remote, you will be receiving additional information from the building principals. At this time, Madam President, that concludes my information items for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Potte. Board members, any questions with regards to what Dr. Potte has shared with us?
Yes, Madam President. Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a comment.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes, I would like to really let Dr. Potte know about the free lunch, the breakfast, and commend him and all the staff and all that participate in the give distribution of the free breakfasts and lunch. It's really been really great, and parents have said to me as well how wonderful it has been, and that you give so much out, and they have been very, very happy. And I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing.
Thank you, Ms. Dredin. Board members?
Ms. Pitts, I want to piggyback on what Ms. Dredin said and took one of my informational points, Dr. Potte, but the Meals on Wheels, exceptional job to the district and Sedexel, you know, to accommodate our students over the winter break to give them enough supply of food while we're out of school. So exceptional job on that, so I want to commend you guys for that. Secondly, I just want to say congratulations to our new inductees in the National Honor Society at the high school. Very impressive. I think it was the seven to nine students, Dr. Potte, on that?
I do not have the exact totals. Mr. Morella normally will be providing us with the list so that if there's any additional assistance or services to help those youngsters in this remote environment, we're going to do so. So I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, Mrs. McLendon, but I will have that information shortly.
I think it was like nine students because it was posted, the virtual ceremony for the induction. So just want to say congratulations to those students. It is definitely a great honor and a privilege to be inducted into that, especially under the circumstances. So kudos to the parents and to the students.
Well, thank you for that. I'm quite sure the parents and the students. These are difficult times for all of us, and it is definitely a situation where young people need to be commended, particularly now, because these are unprecedented times. This is new for all of us. We are trailblazing through this together. Everything is relatively new. There's no one place you can turn for assistance. So I would like to commend the parents for their understanding and their support for all the transitions that we've had to make, and for our young people, particularly those who have been inducted into the Honor Society, still be able to meet that high level of academic expectation. It is something that needs to be commended, and we know without the parental support, that would not have happened. So yes, Mrs. McLendon, to just see these young people continue to achieve under these circumstances is commendable. And thank you for bringing that.
Those are just terrific comments, because here again, and we'll probably be hearing this being said more and more in the upcoming days, we are Winslow. We are Winslow. And Dr. Potte, if I could just take a minute, because of course, we're in the football season, right? And folks are thinking about football, and I don't know that much about football, but if we were two teams, if there was a COVID-19 team and we are a Winslow team, would you say that we are Winslow, we are the defensive team?
Well, at this point, I will always go with the offensive team. You know, take it, take it, we take it to them, Mrs. Pitts. You got to take that one.
Yes.
Always take the offensive, keep moving, keep moving. We're not going to sit back and wait and have to be, to react. So we're going to be proactive, and we're always going to do things that we feel is in the best interest. So I would say we're going to be the offense, and we're going to be proactive, and we're going to take it to them.
Okay, sounds good to me. We are Winslow, we are the offensive, we are the offensive. Yes, Ms. Peterson?
I hope we're going to be the offensive team when it comes down to trying to find, you have a deficit of almost 26% going into where you aid. So where our students that need the most assistance is our special needs. So hopefully, we can resolve that deficit of 26%. So I'm counting on everyone to make certain that we meet the needs of our special needs population.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. And my final words before we go into our public is that we are Winslow. We are truly all in this together.
Mrs. Pitts, can I say something real quick?
Sure, Mr. Shaw, certainly.
I just want to say congratulations to all of our sports teams for doing such a fantastic job, and all our seniors who earned themselves athletic scholarships going senior years during this very, very trying time to end their senior years and move on into college. I also would like to say congratulations to our National Honor Society inductees. I remember when I got inducted into the National Honor Society in high school. So to do it in this type of time, congratulations to them all. And most importantly, to our parents and our teachers to do what they're doing right now and to this, in this time. Take this winter break and enjoy it, rest up, because we got a long road ahead of us going into the new year. So kudos to all of you for all your hard work. Thank you very much for what you're doing to support the students of Winslow.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. We truly are all in this together.
I got one more thing, Ms. Pitts.
Yes, Ms. McLendon?
Like you said, we are Winslow, so I do want to say for the, there was a high school, I guess, toy drive that a lot, they were requesting for people to be Christmas elves to deliver to families that were in need. So Winslow did step up. There were a lot of kudos and thank yous from parents who have received these gifts for their children. Also, even in our community, Mr. Ernest Brown in the building of the youth, there was a big turnout with toys that were given to the toy drive for that, that was delivered out in our community. So for those who participated in it, whether they gave or they used their time to deliver, like Ms. Pitts said, we are Winslow, and it just shows how we come together as a community. I'm sure those kids and those families will be blessed by your sacrifices that you've made.
Absolutely. Winslow, we're going to do this. We're going to get through this. When the going gets tough, tough get going. There it is.
That's a song, Ms. Pitts. That's a song.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McLendon.
Final comment, Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Peterson?
I don't know if other board members received a card from a person in the community, a holiday card that acknowledged the work that we do. And I just want to thank the gentleman for doing that, because he took the time to acknowledge the board's work. And it's a lot of work, but I want to thank him for just going out of the way. So that's a part of, we are Winslow, too.
Exactly. Exactly. And I would like to just add to that, yes, I'll call his name. His name is Mr. Joe Thomas. And Mr. Thomas, if you're out there and you're listening to us, thank you very, very much. It's always good to actually hear from our community that they appreciate the time and energy effort that it goes into sitting on this board and helping to create the best school district in the country.
Mrs. Pitts, before we move on, I'd like to just ask Dr. Carcamo, because I think the exact number of Honor Society students is important. We do have to process, and she would get that information before I would. Dr. Carcamo, do you know how many students were inducted into the National Honor Society?
Yes, Dr. Potte. In my last communication with Mr. Morella yesterday, there were 14 students.
Oh, terrific.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Carcamo, and Mrs. Pitts. I just felt the need, because Dr. Carcamo, of course, is in direct conversation and communication with the building principals, and under most circumstances, that information would be given to her. But if we had more than what we had acknowledged, I felt it was fitting to make sure if there were more that we mentioned that. So 14 youngsters under these circumstances, and we have not, I want the community to know, because we promise, we have not watered down our curriculum. We do not intend to. We're going to challenge these young people. We're going to keep our expectations. We're going to continue to raise the bar. And for those youngsters who have been inducted, they have met that achievement based on the same expectations that have been in place under normal circumstances. So yes, those young people need to be commended, and thank you, Dr. Carcamo, for giving us that number, and Mrs. McLendon for bringing it up. So 14. So we don't want to miss out on that five or six additional students that should be acknowledged.
Okay. Actually, I think, Dr. Potte, that the number this year is higher than last year, if I can recall at the induction. So definitely, in the circumstances we are and then have, over exceed the numbers that we have from last year, definitely worth mentioning. So thank you.
Yes.
We are Winslow. We can do it. Moving now, board members, to public comments. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We also believe in the rights of citizens to observe our board meetings, to assure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district. We ask that speakers, or in this case callers, follow these guidelines for making public comments. The board president or board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. Please respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Number two, please state your full name and address. Number three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Number four, kindly submit any other questions to the Board of Education with your name, address, and telephone number where you can be contacted. Your questions will be answered within a reasonable amount of time. And number five, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. At this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve entering into public comment.
Peterson, move. Dredin, second.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any ayes? Thank you, Ms. Boyle. We are now in public comment.
Thank you, caller. If you would state your name and address, and then you can make your public comment.
Hi, I'm Chemo Waller, and I'm here to support. Good evening, everyone. As I was listening to Dr. Potte share that there is a deficit in the number of aides available for our special education class, that certainly raises concern for me. As I am one of the Garrett, of the superhero in the special education class, and I'm curious to know, does that mean, or is it a possibility, that those students who were supposed to be in hybrid may have to go full remote if there isn't enough support in the classrooms to support the teachers and the students that are in there? It also raises another concern around the uniform debate. As I am shopping just for five pairs of pants and shirts and spending $100 at the children's place for a student who may not end up wearing them, if for any reason, he has to go back to being remote due to either the pandemic numbers rising, or just a lack of support in the school staff wise, I'm really curious to know what is the game plan? If you're not able to get those aides in the classrooms as they are needed? Are you to be not able to get those aides in the classrooms as they are needed? Or if the numbers continue to rise and we have to go back full remote? And parents have found purchased uniforms that they're not able to use, much like the uniforms from the last school year uh in March that are no longer uh of any use?
Um, I will try to address the issue of the aides and the possibility of us having a shortage and what would be our game plan. Uh, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because at this point, uh, we are not sure where uh and if that shortage is going to um, you know, really come to fruition. Because at this point, we are uh still a month, a month away. And w- we will always make sure we look at those youngsters of the greatest need. But keep in mind um that the teachers are the ones who do the teaching. And um, we just want to make sure that that is the case. Because I recall having this conversation in part last night uh about the aides. And yes, the aides do provide a valuable service, but the teaching, the instruction comes from the teacher. And until we know exactly where we are and where those aides will eventually end up or which ones will not be available, then it's a little difficult for me to be able to say exactly what we're going to do. So the first step we're going to do is to continue to communicate with uh the agency that's providing us with the aides. And as we get closer to that opening date, uh, we will have some idea as to where those aides will go that we do have. But I do know one thing, my recommendation would be uh before we even sat down and had this conversation uh with my team, the Special Education Department, is that those youngsters of the greatest need will be first. And then we will try to place those aides accordingly. Uh, but at this point, it's a little too premature to be able to say exactly how that's going to play out. Because one, we don't know how many aides we're going to need. And two, uh, where those placements will take place at this point. So why don't we uh, before we create a situation that's really haven't happened, um, let's, you know, look at it very closely. Let's take one day at a time, make those assignments accordingly. And of course, as a parent, uh, you will be notified as to where we are with that if it affects your child directly. So at this point, I would say let's, let's wait and see as we get closer and the names are provided and we start placing aides where they are based on their availability uh before we get so far ahead of ourselves and create a problem that really haven't existed. Uh, so we are going to do our pro, take our proactive approach and we will be planning accordingly. But right now, how that's going to look, I can't respond to that.
Okay, I believe the caller um hung up, so we'll pick up the next caller.
Okay.
Okay. As soon as, as they come back.
Mrs. Boyle, I ask you a question. So when the person hang, when they uh hang up, does that mean they can no longer hear what's being said?
I believe they can hear it through their um remote. Can you put that person on and just put them on hold? They can hear them through the um, the webex.
Oh, okay. I I just wanted to make sure that the uh parent was able to hear the response. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, caller. You've joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address, then you can make your comment to the board.
Hi, my name is Christina Leonar. My address is Seven Dartmouth Drive in Attico.
All right, Ms. Ma'am, yeah, I agree. You can make your, your comment to the board.
Sure, um, Dr. Potte, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just kind of piggybacking off of the last caller. Um, I, I had two similar questions to her, so I'm just gonna um kind of leave it at that. So um, you did just say that the, the aides um will go to the students that have the most need. I just wanted to know who, who decides that, which um, which specialized students have kind of the most need for um aid?
It's, it's a
And then, uh, do you want me to wait to ask my second question?
Oh, yes, yes, let me. Well, it's, it's almost a given. I mean, we have different um levels of need and um some of our students are severely um, have severe disabilities and absolutely have to have that one-on-one aide in order for them to function. Um, so yes, it, it's already a given. The IEPs are there, the services that they receive. So being able to decide which students are of the greatest need, I don't think that is going to be the most difficult decision that we have to make. I think it's the uh young people who um may require some in-class support, who may be blended into some of the other general classes, who may not need as much one-on-one or small group assistance. But absolutely, my recommendation, again, without being able to see where we are at that time, then yes, my recommendation would absolutely be to identify those students based on their disability um of the greatest need, those are the ones we should be servicing first.
Okay, um, and then um, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. I don't know if you're still talking. If you are, I apologize. Um, my second question um has to do with the uniforms. Um, I knew you were speaking about reimbursement and how um a lot of families haven't kind of tapped into that reimbursement. I know I for one, and I know another, a lot of other families are having the issue of not even having the funds to get the uniforms in the first place, let alone being reimbursed for them. So is there, um, are there funds available that way where it's not so much a reimbursement, but the funds are given to purchase the uniforms in the first place?
The, the uh recommendation that I would make is that you call the business office directly uh as soon as we return from our winter break. And I'm quite sure uh that business administrator will work with you and any other families. But first, we need to know exactly what your needs are so that we can assist you. Uh, so at this point, I would say, uh, just contact the uh business office, uh, speak with our business administrator, Mrs. Boyle. And I'm certain there's something we can do to assist you, okay?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a nice holiday, everyone.
You too.
You too.
Thank you.
Ms. Boyle, are you there?
Yes, Madam President. Currently, the line is open.
Okay.
There was another caller that had called in and um they didn't get, just called back and, and hung up.
Well, maybe their question was answered.
All right, here it is. Here's the caller. Good evening, caller. You have joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address and then you can make your po, comment to the board.
Hi, my name is Allison Ruskowski. I live at Seven Brookview Drive in Attico, New Jersey.
Okay, you can make your, your comment.
Um, I just want to say good evening. Thank you, um, everyone. But I just wanted to make a comment, not out of disrespect, um, I just want to give my point of view. Um, since it was alluded to that maybe parents don't exist that have an issue or a concern about the uniforms. Um, I come at it from a different perspective. My issue is not financial. I would not qualify for reimbursement. I do have three children, all of which who outgrew one hundred percent of their uniforms from last fall. Um, we are talking about a nine, seven, and a six-year-old who grow fast. Um, I have two of which need plus-size clothing, which can be difficult to find. My nine-year-old wears men's clothing, which adds to the expense and the difficulty in finding. Um, and as it was said many times this evening, it is a big what if, if we return in February. So for me, I have the ability to purchase uniforms financially. My concern comes more from, at what point do I pull that trigger? Do I make that decision to invest two to three hundred dollars in uniforms, not knowing if my children will return to school in February? Um, and then if they do return in February, winter clothing versus spring clothing, you know, yasabas hybrid is two days a week. We could probably get away with one uniform for my older children, maybe two for my younger child, even kindergarten. So it's just not about the money. It's also about just the logistics. Is it necessary? Um, you know, I think we, these children have shown unbelievable amounts of resilience. Um, they left school in March and they haven't returned. They have learned to navigate things that they had never, we had never imagined they could do. And so to say that they need a uniform for consistency, I think is selling these kids short. I think they have shown us, they have proven to us that the clothing they wear is, is no indicator of their level of success and that they can achieve things far beyond our wild imagination. And our families can adapt and be flexible and can move jobs. I mean, the flexibility in our home to have three children learning simultaneously in, in rooms and my own job that I support my family and the flexibility that we have shown as first. So I just wanted to give that my perspective is that we have grown as a district. Our students have grown, our families have grown, we have all adapted. And as you guys say over and over, we are in this together. So as a family and a parent in Winslow who has given, all I can given, give since March of last year, it would go a long way to feel included, to feel we are Winslow, for it to be considered that we not have to take on uniforms this spring. It is just an emotional burden for families for something that I don't think is necessary or mandatory for our children to succeed academically. I'm not saying forever. I'm saying in this unprecedented, unsure what-if time, taking uniforms off the table eliminates a big what-if for families. Will I need these? How long will we need them for? Where am I going to get them? How much am I going to pay for them? Will I have to choose buying a uniform over a meal? It's, it's to me something that we could just take off the table and take off the pressure just for the spring. So that is just, I don't need a response. I don't need an answer. I just wanted to give my point of view as a very proud citizen, parent, and member of this community for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The line is open, Madam President. And we have no callers. All right, someone's calling in. Good evening, caller. You have joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you state your name and address, then you can make your comments to the board.
Hi, my name is Abigail Murphy. I live at Four Devonshire Court in Silverville. So I wanted to kind of follow up. I know we've been talking about, um, you contacted the aide, the agency that um, that is supplying our aides for the specification classroom, that is oftentimes uh a required or a mandated related service in a student's IEP. Have we looked into the possibility that since the vendor cannot meet their contracted obligation about putting out a new bid and requesting other agencies that can maybe give the rest of the, the support that the students need?
Not at this time, uh, caller, not at this time. It's a little late uh in the process to go out. First of all, we've already had a one-year contract with that individual. So um, I'm not looking to break the contract. Two, there aren't many other agencies out there that's available to provide us with uh the aides we need. So at this point, uh, for them to be able to provide us with a hundred and forty um at this point and then to just say um, we're not going to accept the one hundred and forty, we're going to go back out. That process is pretty long. Um, and then by the time, you know, let's say, for example, we are able to go back in February the first, we stand a chance of not having any aides at all. Uh, so at this point, uh, no, I have not considered uh breaking that contract with these individuals. Uh, but we are going to try to work with them to see if we can get closer uh to those numbers. Um, so that's pretty much where we are at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Potte. The other question related to that is then, would the district look into hiring their own aides then to fill that four-month gap that is, you know, that forty, forty employees? Would they be, would, would the district be willing to kind of open that up and hire a temporary um employee?
A- at this point, I would say no, because um ninety percent of the individuals that we presently have are residents of Winslow Township. They do live here. And um, um, and that's one of the beauties of it, because this agency gives us the opportunity to hire those individuals in the community. And here's the other side of that. If there are people in the community who's willing to step up and become an aide, it's just a matter of communicating with us. We'll get you in touch with the agency and uh you'll still be serving that need, but you'll still be working for them. Uh, at this point, we do not have a vehicle in place for that purpose. So I would say if there are people in the community who's available to be aides, uh, we could provide them with the contact information so that they can become a part of this agency to meet that need. Um, but no, we are not looking to do that. Um, it's a, it's a very difficult task uh through that recruiting process. This individual uh company, at this point, as I said, have already hired over a hundred and forty. But keep in mind, uh, it's not as a result of the lack of trying. Uh, they've been trying to do uh the recruiting, but again, let's keep in mind that we are in a pandemic and those aides, some of those individuals that worked for us last year are not coming back, chosen not to return. They have some, you know, medical issues of their own or do not want to expose themselves in an environment that has a lot of individuals that could possibly um infect them or they may be living with someone at home. I mean, the same kinds of concerns that many of our parents have of being unsure, undecided. Those individuals present the same issue because we're all working under the same environment. So that's pretty much it. And the likelihood of us not being able to meet all of our uh requirements or all of our needs, it's, it's very uh, it's very good. Uh, so at this point, we're going to do our very best with the company we have in place because I'd rather have the hundred and forty than not have anything at all. And at least we know that we're meeting the overwhelming majority of those needs as opposed to the ones we're not. And not to say that those individuals who may fall into that possibility aren't important, but I think we have to do the very best we can to meet that need. So we still have a little time, uh, so I'm not going to give up at this point. But I wanted to put it out there to the community to let them know uh where we are and that that possibility is there. And um, on our Monday night meetings, we've been very transparent. We've been very honest. And I don't want any of my parents uh to hear it for the first time uh when their child's going to return to school, whatever, and, you know, have to come back to the board or to me and say, well, why didn't you tell us? Uh, so I just want to make sure that everybody know exactly where we are and that we're going to continue to do what we can to meet that need.
Thank you for your time, Dr. Potte.
Thank you, caller. So the line is open. There were a couple uh calls that were coming through when the other caller was on the line. Okay, line is still currently open.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Boyle, is the line still open?
Uh, someone just came through.
Okay.
Good evening, caller. You have joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address and then you can make your comment.
Hi, my name is Lakeisha Ajaylam, A-J-A-E-G-B-U-L-E-N-H. I live at one oh four Golden Medling in Silverville, New Jersey. I live at 104 Golden Meadow Lane in Sycroville, New Jersey. And I just have, um, as I was sitting here, are you ready for a comment?
Yes.
Okay, as I, as I was sitting here listening to the board meeting, I wanted to call to just to voice my opinion. I'm thinking about my kids and I have, uh, kid in middle school, uh, middle school, high school and elementary. So that's fourth grade, eighth grade and ninth grade. And of course, they grew out of their, their uniforms from last year. But the thing, but the thing, the, um, the problem is, I still would have to buy them clothes to go to school. Because not just whether it's the uniform or not uniform, they're walking around in shorts all day long at home. So I think that the board has displayed a lot of compassion and I just want to thank you guys for that. We do need consistency, we do need structure, we do need normality during this pandemic. So we are allowed to go back to school in a hybrid manner. We have that structure going forward, which is uniforms, so I'm for the uniform. Um, so I thank the board for voting on the policy today. Because no matter whether we go back to school or, or go back in a hybrid manner or, or stay home, we still need to dress outfits. So thank you for your compassion for showing that even if you call in, if the, if other people call in to the administration office, you have ways to help families. So you took that away from everybody, that concern away from everybody. So especially during this time, I appreciate that. Cause I was thinking about my own situation. Yes, I can go out and afford this, but at the same time, I still would have to buy them, whether it's jeans or t-shirt. And then I also thought about the teacher standpoint. Do you want to teach your concerned about, put your hood down? You know, put your pants, all this other different thing. So when you start thinking about changing the policy and changing the structure that we have in place, keep the teachers in mind. So, um, I think that's very important. And one of, one of the questions that I wanted to ask, um, Dr. Potte is we think, I think we need to change the narrative. State testing is what's been on my mind. So when we had the parent teacher conferences, I had a question about is, um, is my child ready for the New Jersey state testing and how it will be conducted? So if you could talk a little bit about the state testing tonight, I would appreciate it.
Sure, uh, caller. Um, I want you to know that we are on the same page when it comes to state assessments. Because in my meetings with my peers, with the county office, uh, that has been, that has been a conversation, uh, that we are all having. Um, right now, the state is saying to us, they want to have a state assessment. We are asking questions, particularly myself have asked, um, how are we going to provide a state assessment to students who are full remote? Um, you know, wha- what are the liabilities? What, how do you hold the young people accountable? Who's taking the tests? Um, you know, it's a lot of things out there. And sure, uh, across the state of New Jersey, we know that some of our young people have fallen behind in terms of keeping up and how do we address that? And is the state assessment that important under these circumstances that we continue to move forward in this vein? Uh, we have not been able to receive any responses because our county superintendents have, um, taken our concerns, will be meeting with the New Jersey Department of Education, uh, with our new commissioner, uh, once she is confirmed, to address some of these issues. So at this point, uh, my response is not necessarily evasive. It's because we have not had a lot of concrete responses filtered down to us, uh, at the district level. And there's still a lot of question marks at this point. Uh, but right now, the only thing I do know is that the state is requiring an assessment. But how are we going to, uh, be able to administer that test and be able to get the results that we would like so that we can meet academic needs? There's things to be seen. So at this point, just like everything else we're doing under these circumstances, there's still that big question mark as to how it's all going to play out. So, uh, that's the best response I can give under the circumstances because, um, I don't have all the answers at this point.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but that's just something that we need to start thinking about.
And, and I agree with you, uh, caller, I truly do agree with you. Uh, because April starts the, uh, administering of those assessments and, uh, we're not that far away. But also keep in mind, let's say unfortunately, we find ourselves in a situation where we have to remain full remote. How are we going to administer a state assessment when all of our children are at home? Excuse me, Dr. Potte, we're, we're past the four-minute limit. Okay. For the caller. All right, but I, I, I just wanted to respond because I know I was taking up a lot of that time, uh, with the response. But I think at this point, uh, Mrs. Pitts, it is a great question and is one that I think not only, uh, for us in Winslow, but across the entire state because I think the concerns are the same. Thank you. I definitely agree.
Yeah, I just wanted to say happy, um, holidays to everybody in the board. You guys are doing a fantastic job dealing with the public and it doesn't go unrecognized. And thanks to all the wonderful teachers and happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you caller. Line is currently open, Madam President. No one has called through yet.
Mrs. Pitts.
Mr. Shaw, yes, you sent me saying that people are getting a voicemail?
Yeah, they're, they're calling, it's ringing a few times and then going straight to voicemail.
Do we know what causes that? Ms. Boyle, what could that happen? How could that?
Hold on. I'm gonna, hold on caller. It's taking, it's going to voice, um, voicemail because we are currently on the line with the caller. So if we are having a discussion or the caller's on the line, talking to the board or stating their concerns, others can call in, but they're not going to go through. It's going to go to a voice message and probably asking them to call back. I'm looking at, um, mic two as I referred. So that's.
Shaw, does that answer your question? Mr. Shaw?
You're muted, Mr. Shaw. Yes, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so it answers the question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Good evening caller, you've joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you want to state your name and address and then you can make your comment to the board.
Good evening, Susan Caramano, 443 South Lake Harbor Road. I just wanted to, um, piggyback on what Allison, one of the previous callers had mentioned. Um, she just made a comment about the uniforms, but is this, is this on the table as a topic of, um, you know, possibility for this, you know, return to school? That, um, you may, I guess, just put the uniform issue on hold and let the kids just try to return to normal. I don't think, um, you know, teachers are going to be very concerned about a uniform issue. I think they're going to try and get things back to normal and, you know, try to reestablish the normal precedent of school. Um, but I was just curious, is that something that the board is considering, um, to table uniforms when they return to school?
I'm sorry, you said to table uniforms, the board tonight, uh, made the decision that, um, the uniform, the, the, uh, uniform dress code will remain the same.
When the kids, when they go back at all?
Yes.
They will return in uniform?
Yes.
I just, I think that's unfortunate. I, I mean, I just think that that is something that's of least concern at this point. I know, you know, it's very hard to find these uniforms these days. In, in the, uh, fall when everything is out and in the stores, it's easy to find. But, um, I recently was, was looking for some polos myself and they're not in the stores at all. So, um, I just think it's a burden for parents who, you know, can't find the finances to get through the holiday season and pay their normal bills. But, um, I think it would be nice if that was reconsidered maybe in, in January. So I have to say thank you.
Okay, thank you caller.
So the line is open. Someone did try to call through while that caller was on the line. So if, if there's callers out there, now's your shot. All right, nobody's on the line yet, Madam President.
Okay, we'll wait a few minutes, Ms. Boyle.
Okay.
Do I hear crickets?
Uh, yes you do.
Well, at least I got a smile from some of my board members.
All right, I think this caller came through, you want to pick up? Good evening caller, uh, you have joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you state your name and address, then you can, uh, go ahead and make your comment to the board.
Hi, my name is Miss Moore, I'm on Hawthorne Road in Sycroville, New Jersey. Um, I don't really have a question, I just wanted to say, um, I have two kids, um, in the district and I'm kind of happy that you guys are going to reopen up in February. Um, remote is not as, I mean, I know some parents want it, but for me, my kids, I prefer hybrid. So I am ecstatic. I hear a lot of people complaining about the uniforms. I mean, everybody's going through something, but, I mean, at the end of the day, this is just something that just has to get done. So, you know, I'm bored. Um, I mean, I don't know, I just, I hear so, it's like, if it's not one thing, it's the remote. Now you've got the hybrid and it's like, I don't know, I just hear a lot of parents complaining. But most of these parents complaining, they're probably going to send their kids remote anyway, they're not even going. It's like, it's always some type of complaint. And it's still like, if people actually want to send their kids back to school, it's always like, we just got to hear this in the background. But at the end of the day, keep doing what y'all doing, happy holidays. Um, I don't know, I mean, we're all going through something, but I just feel like the negative Nancy sometimes, it makes the situation even worse, what we already got going on in the world. So, thank you, I'm ecstatic that the kids are going back and happy holidays to everyone. And that's it, that's all I have.
Happy holidays.
Good evening, you joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address, then you can make your comment.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Petkevis, I reside at two Woodcarlin, Sycroville.
Can you, excuse me, can you spell both your first and last name?
Yes, S-A-B-R-I-N-A, last name is Petkevis, P-E-T-K-E-V-I-S.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to say thank you for the, to the board first of all, for all of our work you've been doing. And then I just had a question. Um, my daughter's in kindergarten at school too, and we've come across an issue with finding masks that fit her face properly. And I know when school was slated to be started, uh, in September, there was a, um, uniform for the mask. And I have yet to find one that fits her, that's in a solid color. Is there anything that we can do to maybe change the mask policy? So we can just have the kids have masks that fit them properly rather than, uh, going by the, the solid colors?
Um, um, caller, did, um, you communicate with the building principal? Because we had purchased, uh, a variety of masks in terms of sizes. Uh, if you call your building principal and speak with her, because we knew, of course, that we would have our little people as well as those young adults up through high school. So we have a multiple, um, number of sizes for them. So if you call your building principal and why don't we see what we can do to assist you, okay?
Okay, that, that works for me, thank you very much and everybody have a, a great holiday.
Thank you, you too. Thank you.
All right, bye.
Good evening, you have joined the public comments section of the board meeting. If you state your name and address, you can make your comment.
Um, Michelle Shihadi, seven Belmont Court. Uh, uh, first of all, thank you, Ms. McLean and Shaw and Mr. Blake, for trying to work with the parents who are in financial need by trying to suspend the uniforms. Speaking of which, as I work in retail, many fitting rooms are closed and many stores are not accepting returns. So if you buy the wrong size or something, really you need to keep it because they won't take it back. And I also believe that the issue is putting the money out before the reimbursement for a lot of parents who are in financial need, who are not back at work because of COVID or are on a limited income because of, maybe they're just on unemployment. Um, Ms. Peterson, thank you for the opportunity to buy my uniform. I will be PMing you her sizes and my address. Thank you very much. Also, what is, is, uh, the parents, that when you go back and the parents do purchase the uniforms and we don't go back, then parents are stuck with those uniforms. That's money down the drain. Especially, Ms. Dredge, I just want to comment about the comment you made that children will want new clothes. Uh, but that will be up to the parents and, uh, them clothes that their parent will be buying that are non-uniformed, then that child can wear them again. Not many kids want to wear these uniforms. So you guys really need to reconsider this because it's not fair for the parents that are in financial despair right now. What is the big deal with these kids wearing plain clothes for four months? Nobody's going to die, nobody's going to get mean. I'm sure these kids can dress normally for four months, especially the seniors. So once again, Ms. Peterson, thank you for buying my child's uniforms this year. You guys have a great day.
Thank you caller. Here we go. All right, the line is open. All right. Madam President, there's nobody calling through. Keep trying to put a few more, that's, um, but everybody that I saw that called through, it appeared. That called through have, have gotten through.
Okay, okay.
If you want to.
So at this time, board members, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn our public comments.
Peterson, move.
Dredge in second.
Been moved in second to adjourn our public comments. Roll call please.
Hold on one moment, Madam President. Um, Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredge?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Boyle. Um, our public comment has, uh, session has been adjourned. Uh, Mr. Long, I believe that we have no executive session this evening?
That is correct, Madam President, no executive session this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Long. So therefore, um, this is our last meeting of the year and I wish everyone, every single board member, you and your families have a wonderful and blessed Christmas. And at this time, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Peterson, move.
Dredge in second.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dredge. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. And a safe one.